Meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, February 6th, the year is 2024, and it is 6:00 PM. Ms. Cordova, please call the roll.
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason. And Mr. Mendosa.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
All right. First this evening will be our invocation by Pastor Jose Abaroa from Cypress Creek Church. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to be here, and I love the joy that is in this room. It feels good in here. Let's take a moment of silence and pray with me, please. We thank you, Father, for your mercy. We thank you for your goodness. We thank you for your kindness. We thank you for your peace. And, Father, I pray your blessing over Mayor Houston, over every city council member, over every member of the city staff, over this beautiful city. We are grateful to call this place home, God, and we pray your blessings over every item that will be discussed. We pray for wisdom and grace. All this I ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next will be the pledges of allegiance, United States and Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Now, it is now our citizen comment time period, and the city council welcomes speakers at regular meetings. If you wish to speak, you do need to sign up in advance, either online or in the city clerk's office prior to 5:45 the day of the meeting. You may speak once during the time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic, we ask that you not repeat the exact same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You will have three minutes to speak, starting when you state your name. You'll see the timer on the screen. You'll start in the green, and the countdown begins. When you have 20 seconds left, the timer only shows yellow. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up, and we may hear a bell so we all know the time is up. Mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. And we have five speakers this evening, and I will call out the order in which they will be speaking. We will have Noah Brock, who's in person, Virginia Parker, who is joining us remotely, Lisa Marie Capoletta, joining us remotely, Karen Williams Murch, in person, and Kimberly Maitzen, in person. Mr. Brock, you will lead us off tonight. And for anyone, just move the microphone to be where you need it to be.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Noah Brock, and I'm here on the one-year anniversary of the first city council meeting that I actually went to. And there was another recent anniversary, which was the signing of the amended and restated SMART Terminal Agreement. As part of that agreement, the developer was required to dedicate a three-acre parcel for the first fire station, which was by January 17th, which happened recently as well. We have been following the back and forth between the developer and San Marcos Planning Department about locations for this parcel. Ultimately, the planning department chose the parcel that is located on the north side of FM 1984, near the Memory Lawn Cemetery. Out of all the options, this is the only parcel that is entirely outside of the jurisdiction of the city of San Marcos. The parcel is located in the Martindale ETJ. I have passed around a map that points out the location for this, just for clarification. This part of the SMART Terminal property is the only part that's not in the San Marcos ETJ. I really encourage you to ask some questions about this to help determine the impacts this will have on the city of San Marcos. Why did the city pick this parcel? Will this cause problems in the future when the city wants to annex the new fire station that they just built? Will there be another ETJ land swap happening with Martindale? Will this also remove potential tax revenue from future Martindale, since there's going to be some sort of conflict there, because I imagine the city of San Marcos wants to annex their own fire station? I don't know the answers to these questions, but I truly hope you will look into them. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Virginia Parker, joining us online. Do we have her, Ms. Trevino?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, you guys. This is Virginia Parker with the San Marcos River Foundation. Good evening. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. Been getting over the flu. I wanted to speak in support of the ban on disposable beverage containers. Last summer, we all know that the Parks Department and city staff were overwhelmed with trash piling up all along the river. At the last council workshop, Marshal Huffman went through a pretty thorough presentation talking about the fact that 92% of all contacts that were made from the Marshal's Department were educational. And so, we think that a disposable beverage container ban would be in line with the same thing. Most people are more than happy to comply. We just think this is a great first step. We commend you for having the conversation, and we hope you will move forward with it. So I just wanted to speak out in support of that movement. And that's all.
Okay. Next will be Lisa Marie Capoletta, who's joining us online. Okay, don't see her, okay. Then, following will be Karen Williams Murch, who is in person.
Good evening, city council. Mayor Houston. My name is Karen Williams Murch. I live at 144 Sage Meadows Drive, and I'm here this evening to discuss or talk about item number seven, where the city council is going to consider PDDs in the Development Code. I've done a lot of PDDs. I have one here in town. And they are overused by developers attempting to circumvent the requirements of the Development Code. That's why they're overused, and I believe that's also why the city got rid of them in the Development Code. However, in master-planned communities, they can exceed development requirements and specifications and modify those requirements to make them a better project. The key to a successful PDD is an enhancement of a community. We revised the TRACE PDD three times, because as we were writing it the first time, we didn't foresee things that came up during construction, and so we had to revise it. Size. One of the things that I've heard is that, well, maybe we only should make PDDs for large projects. Well, sometimes a three- or four-acre tract can benefit from a simplified PDD because of the size or shape of that little project, that you can't fit all the requirements of the Development Code into the shape of that property. And so, therefore, what happens is that piece of property doesn't get developed because you can't fit the regular Development Code requirements in it, and the piece of property just ends up being, you know, a garbage dumper, a lot of weeds. It can do a lot of things that will be better for the project that we don't even think about in the Development Code. In the TRACE PDD, we want to de-emphasize garage doors, because we didn't want a row of houses with garage doors. And we required varied setbacks. We required porch enhancements. We did all sorts of things where we had to move the garage so that it wasn't emphasized, and it created a good project, and we still have garages that face the streets. PDDs used correctly can bring superior projects to a city like the city of San Marcos. City staff often don't like PDDs, because they require a lot of staff time. I think that in order to alleviate some of that, a clear outline of what the PDD contains and how it's written, from chapter one to chapter 20. And then also, you know, developers should have to pay additional fees in order to process a PDD. We have to pay fees to process other things. You know, if we're going to use up more staff time, then require the developer to pay more fees. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, and our last speaker is Kimberly Maitzen.
Hello, good evening. Kimberly Maitzen, reside at 2022 Hearthstone Drive. I'm really here just to thank you all and provide support for the single-use disposable container ban and also the limit on the cooler sizes. Jamie Lee has been incredibly helpful with communication on this whole process. I thank you all for the multiple work sessions, really kind of bringing out the discussion on this item and looking at how we can fit it in with the diversity and making it kind of an inclusive ordinance with regard to different uses of our park system. But I think it's really important in terms of having this container ban particularly near the river, near river park system, then also within the river. I would eventually like to see some enforcement on it. I understand that'll be a challenge, and so I also really support education being kind of the priority of the rollout phase for this. I think it's really important to see continuity with the Texas State Park System as well, through Sewell Park and also through the Headwaters area. And I know that city staff and Parks and Rec have also been talking with university administration on that, so I think it's really important to make sure we have continuity along the full river corridor. And with that, being a faculty member at Texas State, I'd also like to help with that, however possible. I also am our chair of the Stakeholder Committee for the Edwards Aquifer Habitat Conservation Plan, so litter cleanup is a big part of those efforts as well that are funded through that, as well as funding from city and other entities. So as much as we can help with that, I'd really like to be able to. We've also recently formed a new group at Texas State, the Texas State River Education and Stewardship Alliance. And so this new group, RESA, we also want to be able to be involved in this effort and help support the city in this new endeavor. I know that this is going to require a lot of patience from park patrons, from the Marshals, from the Parks and Rec Department, from our community, and I acknowledge that, and we see that coming in. So as much as we can help with that education effort as well, we're here to help in that endeavor. So I'd like to, in the future, you know, see more of a dedicated revenue source for enforcement and a really good marketing plan to kind of get this out to the touristy industry, so that when folks come here, they're prepared and they know what to expect. And I think that we also have a lot of great opportunity for local branding with a lot of our local vendors in terms of the reusable containers. I think if we can take advantage of that and try to provide a boost to the economics in our community, that would be beneficial as well. So just in closing, I just want to thank you all. We have come a long way with this conversation. I know we still have a lot of work to do, but I'm excited about these initial steps moving forward. So, thank you all.
And not seeing Ms. Capoletta online, we will close out the citizen comment portion of our program and move to our consent agenda, which only has two items this evening. However, both may be acted upon by one motion unless someone pulls anything. Anybody wanting to pull item one or two?
If not, I'll make a motion to approve items one and two in the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Mendosa, for approval of the consent agenda, items one and two. Let's vote.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendosa.
Aye.
And Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
And that takes us to item three, which begins the public hearing portion of our program. Ms. Trevino.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-05. Annexing into the city approximately 6.26 acres of land, generally located south of the intersection between Rattler Road and East McCarty Lane, FM 110, case number AN-23-11, including procedural provisions, and provide an effective date and consider approval of ordinance 2024-05 on the first of two readings.
Okay. Is your microphone on?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll bring it closer.
We may just need a little closer. Okay, thank you. Ms. Hernandez, good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. This request for annexation is accompanied by two zoning change requests, which are items four and five on tonight's agenda. It's located at the intersection of East McCarty Lane, also FM 110 at that location, and Rattler Road. The property will receive City of San Marcos Water and Sewer, and it's in the Bluebonnet Electric Service Area. Next slide. For context, this request is in an area which has seen significant amounts of annexation as well as zoning changes in the past few years. So just wanted to share this larger map and just give you a general idea of where we are. Across the street is the McCarty Industrial Park, which is zoned light industrial, and then we have a few other properties that have been zoned, again, over the past couple of years. Character District Five, also Character District Four directly across the street, across Rattler Road. And then along Old Bassdrop Highway, you can see some additional zoning change and annexations that we've processed recently. We're going to go ahead and skip two slides. Hayden, please. We have the annexation schedule, and tonight we're holding the required public hearing. Next slide. Staff recommends approval of this annexation request as presented, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, and I will open the public hearing on this annexation. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? If so, approach the microphone and give us your name and your address.
Karen Williams Murch, 144 Sage Meadows Drive, San Marcos, Texas. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My client, Sohoda Holdings, has requested an annexation to the city. I really don't have any presentation for the annexation, other than to request that we, the city annex, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this one? You don't have to sign up in advance for this one. Anybody in chambers? Anyone in the lobby? Is there anyone online? Okay. Ms. Capoletta, you are next.
Can you... I'm sorry. Can y'all give me just one second here? I just got out of work. Hold on, let me... Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, gosh, this is tragic. I can't... I don't even have my phone to time myself or record myself. I just got out of work, y'all. Did y'all miss me? Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. I'll be back with that microphone next public hearing. Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me LMC. If this is the one with the gas station, like I said, I'm like, I just got out of work. I have some concerns. Maybe y'all need to ask them about why the gas station's being built over a creek. And I just kind of wanted to actually talk about equity with developers. I'm a big fan of Ms. Murch. I just want to make that very clear, and it kind of is hard for me to give a speech against her development, because I really feel she does things right. But I want to talk about this siren agenda item that you guys had. I really feel your discussion later should be guided. I feel like they're ineffective. They should not be a requirement of our developers. The sirens don't give direction. They, quite frankly, impede situational awareness. There's a question oftentimes if they work. We should have an emergency communications week. We should have an emergency communication infrastructure after all. The neighbors can talk with each other and filter that information out to our first responders. There's no PR right now with the sirens. If you're going to have this discussion with developers, then I believe you should also make these high rises pay for it, because that's my concern. You're making Ms. Murch and any other good developer pay a lot of money for certain things, but the people who want to build the high rises or the student-based housing, they're the ones who are causing us to pay for the infrastructure with the CIP, or quite frankly, overtaxing an already understaffed fire department. And I'm reviewing that information right now. So we need to make sure that those high rises are contributing their share. Otherwise, there's no equity for the very fine developers like Ms. Murch in terms of what they do. Okay, now here's the part of the citizen comments of how do we solve a problem like Lisa Maria? Heavenly Father, we ask that the protection of St. Joseph's Cloak protect this city from all negative resources, those diabolical, or even those grounded in greed. We also ask that Our Lady of Guadalupe wrap her mantle of protection around all of the fire and EMS, our cybersecurity here in our community. We also ask that anybody here in our community who's struggling with poverty, or family violence, or drug addiction, turn themselves to you, oh Lord, and ask for your mercy so they can turn themselves around and be a contributing member of society. Lord, we also thank you for all the blessings that you have provided here in San Marcos, the trees and the river, and all of the wonderful human resources that we have up here with our elected officials, as well as our city staff. Thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us, and may we turn our knees towards you and look up and thank you for your mercy. In nomine patria filii, spiritus sancto, sickitata me, nuncere simpere et seculara, seculara mament. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
And that concludes the public hearing on this item. And council, looking for a motion on the annexation item.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mendosa, seconded by Mr. Prather. Are there any questions? I'll ask the question that she asked when we get to that one. Okay. If there are no questions or commentary, Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
Okay. Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendosa.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, let's move on to item four.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-06, amending the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ-23-26 by rezoning approximately 2.69 acres of land, generally located on Rattler Road, approximately 400 feet south of intersection between Rattler Road and East McCarty Lane, FM 110, from future development FD District to commercial CM District, or subject to consent of the owner. Another less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions, and provide an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2024-06 on the first of two readings.
Mayor, Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. This request is associated with the previous annexation item. The subject property is approximately three acres, and it's set back a little bit off of that intersection of East McCarty and Rattler Road. Next slide. The property is currently vacant, and the surrounding uses are rural residential and vacant land. Next slide. Surrounding zoning is light industrial across McCarty Road and CD4 across Rattler, and the rest of the area being annexed is proposed for heavy commercial zoning, and that will be the next item on the agenda. This three acres is proposed for CM commercial zoning. Next slide. On the comprehensive plan, the property is within the East Village medium-intensity zone, which is intended to accommodate the city's future growth and services. Next slide. Because CM commercial is a special district, it's not preferred in the medium-intensity zone. Next slide. The applicant is proposing to build structures which will accommodate commercial and office uses, and the applicant has provided sample images and a preliminary site plan which are included in your packet. Next slide. Hopefully, this map will answer some of the questions we had on the previous item. It's not located in an environmentally sensitive area. You can see the nearest creek there across the way on the other side of the light industrial, and if you're looking at that zoomed-out zoning map, that creek is CD1, Character District One. Next slide. Future development must meet all of the Development Code requirements. Next slide. Staff recommended approval of the request, and Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request as well. Just going over those discussion topics, Planning and Zoning Commission inquired whether the location on the comprehensive plan map was medium-intensity or East Village. It's actually both. This is a medium-intensity area that was named East Village in the 2013 comprehensive plan. There's a question about potential access to FM 110, East McCarty Lane, and there is an existing curb cut that will be used for the project. It was noted that the land use suitability map shows this area as having a high cultural significance. So staff did a little bit of digging into those criteria that go into the map, and it looks like actually a mapping error. The city-owned property at the time, so we're talking 2012, 2013 timeframe, the city-owned property that was there for the future use of FM 110, and it looks like it was shifted just a little bit. So when the mapping, all the layers got put together, it was showing up on top of this property when really it should have been part of the FM 110 corridor. And then there was a question about site design and parking locations, and this project must meet all of the Development Code requirements associated with the CM commercial zoning district, including the location of parking. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, looking for a motion on the zoning of CM Commercial?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second that.
Mayor, if we could hold the public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
They're so related. I was thinking we had just done that one. Yes. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak on this item? If you would, state your name and your address.
Karen Williams Murch, 144 Sage Meadows Drive, San Marcos, Texas. Staff did a very good job of presenting the project. This is two pieces on one piece of land. At the back, it's, we're asking a zoning for CM Commercial, and in the front, we're asking for heavy commercial. In the back, we're proposing a small strip shopping center so that we can do restaurants and so forth. I think that there were some pictures of other projects that Mr. Sohoda has done in other areas. Typically, you know, one of his users is daycare centers, sometimes restaurants, other times there's a physical therapy place, there was a 24-hour community healthcare thing. And so that's what he's proposing for this area. We've been working with staff for like six months on this to make sure that everything fit right and that we had the right zoning to be applied for. So I'm here to answer any questions, and that's the end of my presentation.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak far against or about this item? In the chambers, no one in the lobby? Then we'll go to Ms. Capoletta.
Hey, y'all. Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me LMC. I want to thank Amanda for the recap on that slide. That's something I've been very concerned about, is that these... Because, let's face it, you guys have a bunch of sharp cats on that P&amp;Z Commission. They ask really good questions, and we have not been getting those pieces in the presentation. And this is an example of Amanda listening to the concerns of a highly engaged citizen and putting that recap for you, because some of you don't have time, obviously, to go back and watch every P&amp;Z. Jane, I know you do. I know you're watching it, and you're going to go back and watch it, because you're very detail-oriented. That's one thing I really like about you as a mayor. If, you know, I wish you guys would write this in the development agreement, because here's the deal. I trust Karen Murch. I really do. So if she's saying her client is interpreting... It's just very difficult for me to understand why a daycare center, a physical therapy, healthcare, 24 hours, is needed for heavy commercial. I believe she had to make some sort of explanation caveat. Maybe you can do that for the public. I wish you guys would write this into the agreement, because I know there was a gas station situation, so I kind of like I'm on the fence with this. I kind of want to back her up, only because she does have such an impeccable record as being an ethical developer, and I feel like no shenanigans are going to happen on Karen Murch's watch. But I have to be true to myself as an act of be like, huh. When I think... Y'all know the visual. When I think heavy commercial, I think of stinky, hairy, hippie under armpit. That's the visual I'm asking people to put in their mind every time they hear heavy commercial. So I'm just, I have to be true to myself, but I also have to back up a developer who... She's one of the good white hats, so, as Forrest Gump would say, that's all I got to say about that. Thank you all for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
And with that, we will end the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
And I've already got the motion from Mr. Prather and the second from Mr. Mendosa, if that's okay. I'll let you go next time.
No, I won't.
Council, are there questions? Just to make note, this is the commercial one, the gas station, and the heavy commercial is the next one. This is for the, I hate to say strip center, it sounds like it's going to be a lot bigger and more substantial than that, but what we think of is when we think of commercial uses, at least for me. Are there any questions? If not, Ms. Trevino, we will vote.
Mayor Houston.
I will say aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason. Mr. Mendosa.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
And Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Moving on to item five.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-07, admitting the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ-23-27, by rezoning approximately 3.57 acres of land, generally located south of the intersection between Rattler Road and East McCarty Lane, FM 110, from future development FD District to Heavy Commercial HS, HC District, pardon me, or subject to consent of the owner, another less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2024-07 on the first of two readings.
Presentation.
Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. Here we are, round three. This is the approximately 3.5 acres located at the intersection of East McCarty and Rattler. Next slide. Property is also currently vacant, surrounding uses are rural residential and vacant land. Next slide. Again, across the street, we have light industrial and Character District 4, CD4, and we're now proposing the Heavy Commercial section of the property. Next slide. On the comprehensive plan, the property is within the East Village Medium Intensity Zone, again, intended for our future growth and services. Next slide. HC is also a special district, so it is not preferred in a Medium Intensity. Next slide. The applicant is proposing a convenience store with gas sales and a car wash. Again, we have sample images and a site plan in your packet, and this use is allowed by right in the Heavy Commercial zoning district. Next slide. The property is not located within an environmentally sensitive area. Next slide. Future development must meet all of our Development Code standards. Next slide. Staff recommended approval of the request, and Planning and Zoning Commission did the same. Again, on those discussion topics, first was the reason for the applicant selecting Heavy Commercial versus another zoning district. There's not another zoning district in our code that allows the three uses of the retail, for the convenience store, the gas sales, and the car wash by right. In the past, we have discussed that Heavy Commercial has those bad neighbor uses, specifically the waste-related services, which we've written out in quite a few of our zoning changes. I guess one point of clarification, this is a straight zoning change, there is no agreement, just to clarify from the speaker previously, but with our most recent code amendment, we made waste-related services a conditional use, so it's no longer allowed by right in the zoning district, and this development would be subject to that newer code regulation. Corresponding to that discussion was the extent of the drainage area, and if you're looking at the proposed site plan, about half of the area proposed for Heavy Commercial zoning will be used for the drainage and detention pond. So really, we're looking at the developable area being about two acres and a triangle-shaped parcel, so there's not really a lot of room for uses other than the convenience store, other type of, you know, retail-type establishments. You're not going to get any type of manufacturing or anything else that might be considered a bad neighbor use on a property of this size. And if the applicant changed their mind about their development, they would have to come in and ask for rezoning, so we'd have an opportunity to see that again. I talked about the site plan, I talked about the example images, if we need to bring those up for any reason, but that will conclude my presentation, and the applicant's here for the public hearing.
All right. And would you guys, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers or the lobby who wishes to speak on this item, this one being the Heavy Commercial portion of this project?
I think I took up most of the agenda today. My name is Karen Williams-Murch, 144 Sage Meadows Drive, San Marcos, Texas. I think that in order, the developer that I'm working for has done several projects in the city of San Marcos, all of them have turned out really, really well. He actually built his gas station C store at Trace. But I think that there was some miscommunication when we did the planning and zoning. There is no creek next to this project. There's a drainage area, but one of the planning and zoning members did call it a creek, and so people were like, oh. The large area, as Amanda mentioned, there's a very large area that's a water quality basin and a detention basin, so that we don't have any flooding. And the reason why we went with Heavy Commercial, and as I was saying previously, we had lots of discussions for months with the planning department, because we knew that Heavy Commercial might not be liked by, you know, city staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and city council, but it was the only zoning that allowed us to put a gas station, a convenience store, and a car wash in together without having to go through a series of CUPs. We even waited around to see if the business park zoning would be approved, which it was, but then that didn't even allow a car wash at all. It only allowed the other two by a CUP. So we felt that, since we knew what the intent of use was, and we knew that Heavy Commercial covered that, that was why we applied for it. And I'm here for any questions.
Okay, and Ms. Capoletta?
Hey, y'all, my name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta, they call me LMC. I'm not going to go into the gas station, because the rules are very clear, you can't talk about the same thing twice, but I do want to applaud Ms. Karen Williams-Murch. She's, thank you so much, she's just a sharp cookie. I love, I love alpha dog women, and she's definitely one, and she did a great job clarifying that with the creek, because that's kind of what alarmed me. I'm not going to say I support the project, but I'm not going to speak out against her, because I think on her watch, any shenanigans, she's going to put the kibosh down. My only concern, I'm not going to talk about the gas station, I just told you why, is if the neighbors were notified, and if they were notified and they didn't show up, I guess, shame on you, if you have concerns about traffic. If they weren't notified, I would just kindly ask us to extend our notification requirements, because this may be a traffic situation. And then finally, I want to thank Amanda for putting those key talking points in that presentation, because I think that stuff is very important for you guys to do, and that shows me that she's truly listening to those of us, the few, the proud, the wimpy amount that there are who are engaged in this community. I wish Ms. Murch all the best of luck with her future developments. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
With that, I will close this public hearing, and I await a motion. We have a motion to approve from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Prather. Comments, thoughts? When I saw this on the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda, and I saw the Heavy Commercial, I did have that "what?" thought, and if it were larger, I would have more concerns about that. But it is small, because as you know, we don't look at what the use that you have brought to us, because things could change, we're looking at that piece being Heavy Commercial, and having Heavy Commercial on that map. But I came around, as it was explained, why you chose that one, and because it's so small, and we've made some modifications that will be helpful, so I feel that I can support this, but I will say that the Heavy Commercial gave me pause when I first started reading that packet, so, but I'm good with it now. Anything else from anybody? We'll vote, Ms. Trevino.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
And we'll have some retail and some things other than housing and industrial in this area, which will probably be quite welcome. Okay, so we're on to item six, the last in our public hearing series.
Receive a staff briefing and hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-08, admitting Chapter 58, Public Facilities, Parks and Recreation of the San Marcos City Code, to add restrictions on certain beverage containers and coolers in the San Marcos River and within designated park areas adjacent to the river, providing penalties for violations of such restrictions, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of any conflicting provisions, and provide an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2024-08 on the first of two readings.
All right, presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jamie Lee Case, Director of Parks and Recreation. So of course, we are here for the public hearing and first reading of your single-use beverage container ordinance. Next slide, please. This evening, we will be, just as an overview, we're going to go over the components of the ordinance. We're going to discuss further the proposed go zones and no zones that we discussed during your work session last time, to just kind of provide some additional clarity. We're going to, I'm going to provide a general update regarding the status of our communications and marketing plan. We're going to discuss the personnel cost comparison that was requested during your work session, and then next steps. Next slide, please. Just as a general overview, this is just a map showing our upper and lower San Marcos River. It is 120 acres along city-owned property. Next slide, please. These provisions were taken from direction that we received during your work session held on January 16th. That first prohibition will be for the single-use beverage containers only, not for single-use containers. So only reusable containers would be allowed within the public waterway of the San Marcos River, and within designated no zones, which would be along the river. We'll go into that a little further here in just a second. The no zones, as I've kind of dubbed them, will be clearly defined with signage, and the go zones will not be restricted at all. Regular access and activity would be able to continue without restriction. Next slide, please. We received direction regarding the limitation of cooler size to 30 quarts per person within the waterway, but no limitation would be impacted within the riverfront parks themselves. We received direction regarding alcoholic beverages of a volume capacity of five fluid ounces not being allowed within the public waterway or the riverfront parks. Alcohol is already not allowed within the riverfront parks, but this is just an additional clarification. The ordinance would go into effect on May 1st. During that first year, we would only be providing education to patrons, there would not be any citations issued for violations. Next slide, please. Going into the establishment of the go zones, just to provide the council some additional clarity as to how we, what criteria we kind of looked at to identify what those go zones would be best. So we looked at, you know, best ways to minimize the impacts to our patrons while still accomplishing our goal. That picnic areas are clearly established for patrons to enjoy the proximity to the river, to create a buffer for signage and education. And then additionally, is the area very visible for patrons that may be visiting from out of town? So, you know, we want to set folks up for success, and our visitors are, well, we want them to enjoy their time here. Next slide, please. The next several slides are just an example of kind of what we're looking at for go zones. As I said, these go zones, these are typically our picnic areas, highly used by our visitors and our residents. The activity there would remain unregulated as far as they would still be able, allowed to have the single-use beverage containers, so it would not be restricted. The no zones are primarily going to be along the banks of the river, so you'll see, will have signage that'll clearly identify that only reusable containers would be allowed within that space. That would also be leading down into the river. Next slide. This is just an example of Raymond Lucio Park. That is where our youth baseball and a softball field are, and we do have a pavilion within this space as well. You will notice that Crooks Park is not currently identified as a go zone. That is primarily because of the environmental sensitivity within that area. It is heavily wooded, there's trails, it's a great space, but generally, it's, there are picnic tables that are present, but typically, folks will actually get, there's not really ease to get into the river, except in what we call, I guess is commonly known as Girl Scouts area, Girl Scout camp, I think is what most locals will call it. So, you know, just kind of limiting the access, because people do get into the river right there, and so we really want to try and set this up for success as much as possible by putting the signage as they would enter into this area. Next slide, please. Children's Park would 100% be a go zone as well. We do receive several school districts from all around our area that go and visit the Meadows Center, and then come here to picnic and play at Children's Playscape, so, and they don't always contact us, we don't know when they're coming, so instead of sending out notifications to every school district within, you know, 100-mile radius, we thought it's just going to be easier just to leave that a go zone. Next slide, please. Plaza Park, so this might be a little confusing, but there is, that is Grant Harris' office there, where we office as park staff, and then the Chamber of Commerce. This is not a hard line, it is just to show the Plaza Park, where we host a lot of our summer in the park events, our summer concert series, and those sorts of, you know, special events that folks are able to utilize that area for. So that would, most of those are by permit, so obviously, we would still allow any of our visitors to also take up that area too, to enjoy as well. Next slide. City Park, so this outlines City Park, where we, right now, we do have picnic areas within this area, up at the, I guess, the northern side, and then again, down into the lower southern side as well, that there is a basketball court there, and additional picnic tables. We also, you know, I have that entire parking lot outlined as well, so this is just a general example of, hey, we're not going to, it'll be a go zone, so as people kind of make their way to various parts of the park, they can unload and get to where they want to be. Next slide, please. City Council did request kind of a personnel cost comparison regarding, you know, our park ambassadors, which are solely educational, as well as, you know, they pick up litter and those kinds of things as well. Then we have our deputy marshals, which are, you know, our licensed peace officers, which can enforce federal, state, and local laws, and then our park rangers, which are licensed emergency medical technicians. They are not licensed peace officers, but did want to provide you all with that cost comparison there. Next slide. Just to touch briefly on our communications plan, you know, that is going to be primarily outreach strategies developed with the Communications Department, as well as our Convention and Visitors Bureau. Staff is already working on our marketing plan, as well as the communications plan. We are meeting again this week to continue to develop that plan. Don't have really anything to show you this evening, but we will share it with you as soon as we have something that is more tangible to share. Next slide. This is just a couple of slides from our previous presentation that Ms. Bonowitz, with Communications, shared with the city council, showing the various methods of the outreach strategies that they plan to utilize. Next slide. And then additionally, this is just additional outreach strategies that will be resident and visitor-focused. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, our next steps would be for the city council to formally adopt the ordinance, that will happen on second reading during your next city council meeting. Staff will continue the final development and implementation of that marketing and communications plan. Approval for funding for the implementation of that communications plan, which city council has previously discussed, being, I think, 50,000 general fund dollars, and 50,000 being hot tax dollars, or hotel occupancy tax dollars for marketing. And then the education period would begin May 1, and last through, of this year, and last through April 30th of next year. And I am available for any questions you may have.
Okay, I need to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers, in the lobby, who wishes to speak on this one? If you would, go to the podium and state your name and your address for this one. Not required for citizen comment, but it is for public hearings.
Good evening, city council. My name's Noah Brock, and I live at 3355 FM 1984 in Maxwell. And I first want to say that it's really great to see something like this making its way very quickly through the approval process. It really shows that there's a lot of support across the board, and I support it as well. However, I still feel like this ordinance isn't going far enough. There are many single-use containers that are not for beverages that end up in the river, and limiting this just to beverages is really focusing on one type of refuse. There's also- There's also a lot of expansive go zones, and I feel like that's going to make it really difficult to separate where that line is in all of these parks. And I specifically want to point out, like, City Park. City Park, there's a massive parking lot there. That's where the majority of out-of-towners come to visit and park there, and so there's going to be definitely more single-use containers that are coming in to the parks right there. And so maybe consider making that buffer further in from the river. Like, there's going to be a lot of issues going forward with that, trying to separate that. And there's been many times where I've been at a park and I see a single-use container on the ground getting blown into the river just by wind. And this could be just because somebody put something down in the wrong place or didn't dispose of it correctly, or there's an overflowing trash can, and it just gets knocked right out of there and flies straight into the river. And so I hope you'll consider looking at these go zones in more detail, making sure that there's an adequate buffer there. I know there's a lot more work involved with this, but I encourage you to keep digging into it. This is really excellent progress, and just keep it moving forward. So, thank you.
My name's Annie Donovan. I live at 3355 FM 1984, Maxwell. I'm speaking in support of the ordinance for the single-use beverage container ban and cooler limitations. I want to thank city staff, Parks and Rec, and all of you and everyone else that worked on getting this together. It's a great beginning to protecting our beautiful river. I did watch the work session and appreciate the thoughtful discussion, but I do have one specific question regarding the limitations that I hope can be clarified, and please forgive me if I missed the part where this may have been discussed previously, but I'm curious, well, my notes went away. Sorry, one second. Here it is. Okay. Will the Lions Club also be enforcing both the single-use beverage container ban and the 30-quart cooler limit for folks using their services? I don't remember that being discussed in the previous work session, so I was just hoping that can be clarified. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else in chambers or in the lobby wishing to speak on this item? If not, we'll go to Ms. Capaletta.
Can y'all tell I'm still trying to catch up? I work 14 hours a day and I'm here every, every week. I'm sorry, here we go. Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capaletta. They call me LMC. I live at 1322 Belvin, also known as the Belvin Bell Cacita. This one I'm kind of torn on. I'm really concerned about the costs that it's going to cost a taxpayer, and I just wish maybe in your, the fleshing out of your discussion, you could tell us the total drive-out price. And I know this has been a lot of work for Jamie Lee, who I just adore. You know, and I, this is like step back and rewind it back. I just love Noah and Annie. To all of those who are watching tonight, or if you're in the chambers, where have you guys been during the comprehensive master plan conversations? And do you know that there's a whole conversation about Plan One, Option One, Option Two, and Option Three? And I'm just, I'm very concerned that you have not been involved in the comprehensive master plan. It's kind of like squirrel. It's a can ban when there's actually more diabolical influences at work regarding building high rises on the river with all of the sewage and everything. And these are, these are things that many people in this community who are engaged are researching and contacting me about. So if you're watching tonight and you didn't take the time to come out and speak, or if you spoke in the past, I really want to encourage you to be a little bit more mindful on the actual forms and sources of pollution that will be much more detrimental to the river than some cans. And I want to thank everybody who does the water cleanup. I don't go in the river. I've fought my life to fight for the river, but every time I go in the river, I get huge skin rashes and lesions and whatever's in that river my body does not like, and it's been happening since I was a kid. So I'm one of the few people in town who does not go in that river. But I do appreciate the people who do go into the river and pick up the cans, but I just think this is, and I don't even know if you can enforce it. Someone could test this as a court of law and throw in a can and go, okay, and take you to court. So with that legal consideration, as long as what the cost to the taxpayer, I'm just really, and the fact that these people haven't been involved in much more pressing issues, I thank you for your work, and it's a, you know, I just really don't have an opinion on it. I guess, whatever. I'm not running for political office ever, so I really don't care. Thank you for your time and God bless San, maybe I will mark Lisa. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you for your time and God bless San Marcos.
And I will close the public hearing on this item, and I'm looking for a motion on Item Six, Restrictions on Certain Beverage Containers and Coolers in the River.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Questions, concerns?
Well, I think, I mean, this is a big deal for our community, and, you know, I always try to look through the lens of public safety, personal liberties, and people's freedoms, and leaving behind a legacy of a cleaner, greener community. Some of the things I do like about this ordinance, there are some similarities to the other central Texas rivers, like the Kamal River, New Braunfels. There's similarities that I found that could be useful, so there's, this just becomes a known fact, when you float rivers in central Texas, you don't bring single-use containers for beverages. I did have concerns about, like, the picnic aspect when people aren't going to the river, I mean, they're going to the river, but they're going there to picnic with families at Children's Park. That's something that, you know, my family does often, you know, kids want yogurt packs and things like that, and I think with the concept of the go zones and the no-go zones, I think we can address that. All around, this is a very difficult task. I think, I think the world of our Parks Department for taking the lead on this and guiding it to where it is now. I think what we have in front of us is a, is a good ordinance, and I think it will increase public safety, and it will leave behind a legacy of a cleaner community in San Marcos. So I will be voting for it.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah, same thing on the staff's presentation and everything. This, to me, on the legal aspect of it, is hard to enforce, but more importantly, it changes behavior, and we have to start somewhere. And this is going to be the thing that starts, that sharing to the children and on and on and on. So I'm very glad we're doing it. Like I said, I just want to change behavior more than anything else. So, good job.
Anyone else?
Actually, I will thank you, Mayor. To staff, thank you so very much. I know this is something that's come across a couple of times throughout the years, and I really appreciate your dedication to making it work. We're all different personalities up here, and we've all used the river and the parks in our different ways, and I really appreciate my colleagues and us, the discussions we've had about those go zones, to understand that, again, a family of four in this city makes an average of $40,000. These parks are very important for us to be able to enjoy them, especially for birthday parties and things like that. So we need to understand that this is also just to protect the river, but for our citizens, the ones that pay those taxes that deserve to appreciate every part of this. So thank you, staff. Thank you to my colleagues. Very proud to be on council right now while this is going, so thank you very much, guys.
I've got several things that are of concern. First of all, thank y'all for turning this around quite quickly, coming up with the idea of the no zones and go zones, and we're going to see how all that works. I think that it will, it's just, it's going to be education to people, it's going to take a while to get them, get them through. My concern is 58034, Glass and Single-Use Beverage Containers Prohibited. See, "Any person who shall violate any provision of this section shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof shall be punished by a fine not more than $500." And that's fine. One, it is an affirmative defense to prosecution if the individual is involved in a cleanup or collection of trash and debris from the river. My concern is that they could be, now, I'm going to give our rangers a lot of credit that they're going to figure this out, but my concern is, as I read this, and Mr. Gary, tell me if I'm wrong, that if there were a misunderstanding or something, that someone who's involved in a river cleanup could be ticketed for this, and they're going to have to go to court to say, "I was involved in a river cleanup." I don't think that's good at all to even have in the ordinance, and so I was given a motion, but I don't think it's definitive enough, so we can talk about this on the second reading would be fine. But am I correct that that could happen to someone who's involved in a river cleanup?
I think the intention here was that, again, our marshals would see that, that participating in a river cleanup would not be a violation, but I, to your point, Mayor, could we state that more clearly? I think that's not a problem, to state that more clearly as essentially an exemption from application of the ordinance.
I think, I can go with an exemption, because I don't want, oh, someone who's really not involved in a river cleanup being able to use that as an excuse to escape. But it's this defense to prosecution that's just bothering me, because they could be ticketed, fined, and then they've got to go, go fight it. And if that happened once, we're going to have real trouble getting people to participate in river cleanups. So I would rather see it as an exemption, and if council agrees, then we can ask for wording to come back next time.
And we could do similar, I think there's a couple other parts that might refer to the affirmative defense, but any similar provision, we can look at that, and I'm happy to bring back, we could put it in the packet as proposed.
Let me make sure we've got four. Are y'all, are y'all good with this?
I'm just confused. Can you walk me through this scenario again? So what is the risk or what's the worry? Like, somebody?
Really, I think she, the mayor's wanting it more, I think, more clarity, that the reality is if you're involved in a river cleanup, you know, an organized, or even if you're a citizen, it's like you see a floating container in the river and you're being a, you know, good Samaritan and you clean, you pull it out of the river, you're exempt from the, from the, this violation.
That's what I want, is to be exempt, but explain what it is in the ordinance right now and what would happen if there's a misunderstanding with what somebody's doing.
Right, so without that clarity, I think what we're saying is you might have to go to court, because the park rangers may misunderstand the ordinance, or it's, it may not be clear enough. So they write you a citation, then you have to tell the judge that, oh, I was involved in a cleanup. And I think what the mayor's getting at is, can we make it easier for rain, you know, the park rangers to really understand where the enforcement line lies?
So the misunderstanding?
That's not a problem.
So it's like a river cleanup day, that everybody knows the cops, y'all just do a fabulous job advertising. But the concern is that whoever's enforcing these things is going to be unaware of that, see somebody picking up trash and write them a ticket?
It might be somebody on one far end doing it, they don't see the rest of it, or it doesn't even have to be River Cleanup Day. It could be, I don't know, a family that's down there that says, hey, we're going to go clean up a bunch of trash, so they're down there and they've got, you know, cans in their hands. I'm just trying to protect the people that are really doing this, and people getting a fine and having to go to court to get out of it when they were really just trying to help clean up the river, I don't think we want to do that.
So this breaks it down to, let's say I'm in the river, and a marshal's coming by, and the assumption is because I'm picking up the piece of litter and taking it out of the river, the officer could have think, could be thinking, you're violating it because he has it in possession in the river without the knowledge of me trying to clean it up?
You're getting out with that orange crushed can in your hand.
And the assumption is he's littering instead of I'm trying to clean up.
But what's going to stop somebody, anybody, from saying, the cops comes and you're throwing one back, and they're like, oh dude, actually, you didn't see me? You know what I mean? Like, I feel like, generally speaking, and this is as an abolitionist, the folks who work the river, and these are the type of interactions where there's not like a whole bunch of other chaotic things happening, they do ask some pretty good probing questions, like.
I would hope this would never happen, because our rangers would be doing what we want them to do.
Generally, it's like, hey, you're in violation. It's like, no, actually, I saw a can, I jumped in, you know, I went to grab it, and they're like, okay, cool, but I'm watching you. You know what I mean? I don't know. But I appreciate the, I appreciate, like, trying to do whatever we can, but I wonder if that's more like on the education piece, like as we're training, you know, the folks who are going to be enforcing this, like, ask probing questions, this is going to be in a new ordinance, like, you know? I don't know. I don't know. I think it's a valid concern, just.
I think we just let the officer in his own discretion. I mean, they're experts up there every single day. They know who volunteers to clean the river and who doesn't. But just my thought on it.
So you're okay with doing the fine, and you have to go to court to get out of it if you were really trying to help?
I mean, I'm not okay with the fine at all. I'm the wrong person to ask.
If you had somebody actually get a ticket for that, and the officer wasn't wise enough to not give him the ticket, we may do some counseling from a different point of view on that.
There's, there is that.
I would doubt, I mean, we have some good guys down there. I doubt that would ever happen.
I would hope it never would.
I think beyond, like, the incident, or like, beyond the circumstance that you're describing, there's like a lot of things that could happen where there's some miscommunication, including what you're describing. But again, I think that's where the education piece comes, like, that's even like professional development for those who are going to be enforcing it. It's like letting neighbors know how to advocate for yourself, when it's like, no, and because we have a lot of neighbors that go out on their own, and they got their nets and stuff, but that's pretty obvious, and I feel like nobody's going to be like, let me go get a bag, or I'm going to pretend that I'm picking up trash. Like, that's a lot of work. But, uh.
Well, if y'all aren't as concerned about it, I need four to say that they're as concerned as I am, and I'm not hearing four that are, so I can let it go. I'll reserve the I told you so's for later.
No, no, I don't have a problem cleaning it up.
That's some Alyssa energy right there, I love that.
It doesn't hurt to clean it up. That's my thought.
Right, yeah, I guess, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yes.
I support this.
That's fine, yeah. I think it's a productive conversation regardless, because it's opening up like the importance of, yeah, but I'm fine with that.
That's why I didn't come with the amendment ready, because I wanted to see where everybody was. Mr. Prater, Mr.?
Come with a good amendment for it.
Try to fix it?
Yeah, I don't think there's like harm in that.
And this only applies to when somebody's truly trying to clean up. Okay, so we'll get something back and we'll see where that goes. Another one where I'm concerned is in 58039, and it's unlawful far, and I think this is already there, place a table, grill, tarp, tent, or shelter in and on the banks of the river or anywhere restricted by signs. My concern is, do we actually know the definition of the banks of the river? Is this something that can be defined? I think Ms. Maury said there's a state definition of the banks that perhaps we can just put the, there we go, y'all. I just think we need to have a definition. I'm not opposed to the content here, I'm good with that, it's just in order to make sure that someone, you can define, the park rangers can define exactly what Riverbank is, because that could be a conversation between intelligent individuals.
Leg out.
So are y'all good if we add definition of Riverbank?
Mm-hmm.
And here, it wouldn't be here, it'd be in the definitions portion. We can add that?
You bring that up, but it also makes me think when you do, that there should be a distance of measurement applied to that.
That was my thought, is you take the water's edge and you say what it is, 10, 20, 30 feet, pick something, but.
Because, you know, you could, yeah.
We were going there.
I feel like that would be difficult.
Please do.
I absolutely did. Look at that, I took, you know, a measurement of the furthest width of the bank from, you know, say, the shared use path, which what has previously and historically per ordinance, as it's written right now, served as that buffer area. So I took that, it was about 150 square feet. Well, as you walk along the shared use path, it gets exceptionally narrow. I mean, it could be as small as five feet or less. So providing a definitive measurement would be really difficult. So that is the primary reason why I didn't include a definitive measurement.
I didn't know what the best way to go about it, but again, without a definition, um, in here, then where, what, what, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, if I could add to this, um, the riverbank language is in there right now in the current, current ordinance. And so, I think what we're trying to achieve by creating the no zones is creating a zone beyond the riverbank, and that's what Jamie's working on to define that so that it makes sense geographically on there. So, the definition of the riverbank is not quite as critical because the no zone is going to be back away from the river to create that buffer. We can certainly add a definition if someone wants to understand what a riverbank is, but the no zone is going to be beyond the riverbank.
But the no and the go zone isn't part of this one. This is about where you can put your table, grill, tarp, tent, or shelter, unrelated to the, the other. It was, you know, we got the whole ordinance in front of us, and so I found something that wasn't related to the new stuff. So, I guess if it hadn't been a problem in the past, maybe it didn't, but we're saying, if we've got a rule about a riverbank and you're not telling me what the definition of a riverbank is.
I guess I was thinking there was no tables, grills, or anything in the no zones in addition to the single-use containers.
That is absolutely correct. That is what the ordinance currently states, um, is that they're not currently allowed within that area, but as the ordinance currently is written, it specifies, uh, between a trail or a shared use path and the river. And so, it doesn't specifically say riverbank. That is my language that I am suggesting that we change it to just for clarification. But that it is, that's currently the, we have signage, it's not great, it has to be better.
Right, well, and the thing is, point one percent's going to read the ordinance. I'm just looking for if somebody's done something, and now they're trying to figure out their way out of a ticket, and they start looking at here, and they're going to say, "There's no definition of the riverbank," and there the ticket goes. So, is this definition, just putting it in the definitions, would this
Yes, ma'am.
Be any, uh, would this be a problem in any way?
No, very easy.
Can we just add that? Are y'all good with that? Okay, and then the last one is simple, and it is, I'm not worried about the, the people taking the trash, uh, but the coolers, uh, 58073, it says, "Coolers that are allowed on rivers, it shall be unlawful for anyone to use, carry, possess." The, anyone's kind of generic. If the point is, and I think it is, that any one person, it's one cooler per person, so to replace anyone to any one person, will that make it more clear that it's one person, one cooler per person? And secondly, to just name this one, instead of coolers that are allowed on rivers, somebody's looking at this, "Oh, cool, they allow coolers." This is, the, the whole point is limitations on coolers, and that could be renamed to something else. But at this point, I would like to make that amendment of those two items, to add limitations on in front of coolers and to replace anyone with any one person, just so that, I'm not trying to change the content, I'm just trying to make it more clear. So, that's my motion, and thank you. Are there any questions on this? And if, if somebody comes up with something better before next time, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, but, uh, okay, I've got a motion, and Mr. Prather seconded it, so let's vote on this.
All right, Mr. Gleason, Mr. Mendosa.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, yes. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay, is there anything else? If not, I will call for a vote on the main, main motion as amended. If anybody's got any flashes of brilliance between now and next time, we'll have two other things to consider, and we'll go ahead and-
And we'll make sure these are shown on the packet in second reading where you can see the context.
And, and, and the R, uh, and the content.
Mayor, before y'all vote, if you wouldn't mind, I just really want to acknowledge again, I know counsel did, um, Ms. Case. She really showed a lot of leadership through this process. It wasn't an easy thing to navigate, and she really took the, the, you know, took the lead on making sure we could get this forward. Obviously, it was a collaborative effort with Communications and City Marshal's Office, um, also our Convention and Visitor Bureau. But I do know that, um, Ms. Case has done an amazing job of really showing the leadership and taking on that leadership role and getting this. So, just want to commend and recognize her.
And so quickly, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that we can get started.
Typical Jamie, typical Jamie.
That's true, not a surprise, um, but yes, thank you to you and everyone. And, uh, the challenges will be in implementation and enforcement, and we will thank all of those folks, uh, in advance. So, thank you. Ms. Trina.
Mr. Mendosa. Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason. Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to you and everyone who worked on that. Okay, uh, item seven.
Whole discussion regarding the possible addition of planned development zoning districts to the development code and provide direction by motion to staff.
Okay, I may have used the wrong term here. What I'm looking for, I'm not looking for the old-style planned development district that we did where we gave in on a bunch of stuff in order to get some other things. That's not what I'm looking for. What I'm looking for, and I understand they do this in New Braunfels, is that when somebody comes in and says, "This is the project." For example, the one we had today, heavy commercial, just trying to get a gas station in there and some other things, so that we can say, "I'm good with that version. I'm not comfortable with the heavy commercial in general." Because if you win the lottery and decide to go to the Cayman Islands for the next ten years, and someone else has their hands on that heavy commercial zoning, uh-oh, what's going to happen? And we have that conversation. I truly believe this will be easier on developers who come in with a project, "This is what we want to do, this building's going to go here, this is going to go here," et cetera, hold their feet to the fire on what they promised us, instead of me having to tell y'all, and y'all know this, I'm just reminding you, don't look at the pretty pictures, look at what the zoning is that we're, that has been asked to be changed. That's what I'm looking for. Let's call it something different if we need to, a PDD's going to imply something that it isn't. I'm fine with a different name. It's just, I think it will make our lives easier. It'll be harder on the planning department because you've got to pay attention to that plan. But then again, we're less likely to be surprised. Y'all know we've had a few surprises over the years, and it just always makes me a little nervous when I'm voting for one of these industrial or heavy commercials. Oh, my gosh, this, this project looks fine, but what else could go there? You know me, what's the worst that could happen conversation?
I've been trying to push this back on since I've got on council again. PDD's are extremely important for growth. It gives you ability to control the project the way you want to control the project.
Are you talking about the old style or what I'm talking about?
Just both, yeah, both. Just the, the control factor of it. It gives you more control, and you get a better picture of what you want as opposed to, you know. Cookie cutter stuff.
The, uh, the concept of, uh, charging more, uh, for administrative fees and stuff, that was brought up by a developer.
If some, if staff suggested that, I could say yes, because it will take more staff time.
Yeah, and, you know, ideally, you know, we want development, to pay for development, and this is one mechanism to do that, and I could be supportive of that.
Okay, but in general, you're good with, let's find a way to hold their feet to the fire on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, I'm one of the old dinosaurs that remember the planned development district. That whatever they said they were going to do, they had to chew the teeth.
Yep, and sometimes they didn't, and we have not always held their feet on it.
Well, I can, one project didn't go the way it's supposed to, but, yeah, I'm okay with it as well, uh, Mayor, the way you're putting both together and making it work.
Okay.
Quality, quality, quality. Uh, I'm absolutely a hundred percent down for this, thank you for bringing this up.
Ms. Garza?
I don't care, the way you seem very passionate about it, everybody seems fine, so.
I can think of probably four times in the last two years, we sat here and went, gee, I wish we had that because we liked the project, we were hesitant about the zoning change. And if someone doesn't do that project, well, we could talk about, then bring a different project in, or if they flip that property to someone else, they can come in, talk about what they want to do, and we can look at that. And if we like that, we can approve that. That's where I am, Ms. Hernandez. Any, any enlightened, enlightenment for us?
I don't know that I have anything to enlighten you at this point. It sounds like counsel wants PDD's back in some form or fashion. So, I think my question would be, do we want to talk about what counsel wants to see? Because I've heard it's the industrial kind of focus that we've talked about over the past few years. But when I hear Councilmember Scott talk about being able to have some control in the project, I think he's probably talking about some of the trace Blanco Vista, which are those mixed-use developments. So, if you want to leave it open-ended, we can kind of chew on everything that counsel and even Planning Commission has said over the past couple of years and propose something that y'all could review and maybe have as a starting point, and we can look at New Braunfels as a starting point if we think that that would fit here.
I think there's maybe specific use permits, this house that they do, and I'm not sure. And perhaps we don't want to use the old PDD term because we've got PDD's, it, it really was different, uh, and that's not what I'm talking about. So, what we call it, I, I don't care if it's something new, um, but-
And, and Mayor, just-
The objective is just to be, from what I'm understanding and what I'm hearing, is just the objective is to be able to negotiate with developers to make sure that you're getting the things that are valued by the community, valued by the council in terms of the type of development that happens. So, it's, it's just giving that flexibility for that negotiation is at the overall intent.
It's not even so much the negotiation, it's if they promise it, then they-
We've got to be able to hold them accountable for it.
We can hold them accountable, but y'all will recall the development at 123 and Wonderworld, and it would be the hospital side corner, and we had a whole conversation, and the folks wanted a hotel and a filling station and gas station, some other stuff, and we did have a discussion with them. The hotel, I think we said, "Bring it forward" because it was going to be back up against the neighborhood. I don't remember what all it was, and I don't know, I haven't, I don't see any dirt turning, so I'm not sure that project's even moving forward. But we had, before your time, it was, uh, we had a conversation because there were some things, just the way it was laid out, we weren't thrilled with. And I think that when we had the more specific zonings, this was maybe less needed, but now that we've got CD5 and it allows an awful lot in the CD5, um, yes, but this would be, if a developer did not want to do this, and we were not comfortable with the zoning and said, "No," we could say, "No." And, uh, but if they are willing to put it on paper, or as I tell, used to tell people, uh, saying, "Yeah, I'm not going to play music past 10 o'clock for alcohol, CUP's," I'd say, "Then let's write that down." And when they say, "Okay, we're good," and when they start kind of backing out the door, you kind of know where that lies.
So, some sort of zoning overlay that gives everyone assurance of what is, what they're, that what is being proposed will be what is built as an end product.
Now, my question, if this is more of a specific use permit, would that mean that the zoning stays? Again, somebody wins the lottery, they're going to spend their life in Paris, France. And so, they're not going to do that project, sell it to someone else. Would the zoning remain? It's just someone else would have to show us their project before they could build? I'm not sure how we take this to its logical conclusion, so that's where I'm kind of open to, or does it revert to the, the previous zoning? I, I don't know.
So, what we did previously is it's a zoning overlay, which means that it sits on top of that land the same way the zoning district does.
So, once it's zoned, it's zoned, and then it's just what you can do with it.
Well, yeah, and the overlay sits on top, like the historic districts. Those are zoning overlays. They tell you what you can and can't do based on historic guidelines. PDD's are very similar, and whatever, you know, whatever mechanism we come up with or what we call it, I would picture something in the form of a zoning overlay. We wouldn't want to do special use permits, I don't think, because we have conditional use permits.
Right.
And those are really interchangeable terms in our industry, so-
We used to have CUP's for alcohol and stuff.
Right, and then we switched it to CUP's. So, it's kind of, like I said, interchangeable, but we would have to look at something more of a zoning overlay with those standards and criteria. In the past, we have allowed some negotiation where developers can ask for waivers. Is that something that counsel would be willing to consider? Would you want to include waivers, or you have to meet the code and go above?
I would be willing to leave that up to staff, but I'm not looking, my purpose here is not to be doing a bunch of waivers in order, in order to get them to do what they're promising that they're going to do. That's not what I'm looking for, is to give stuff up, because I think we gave up too much in some of the previous ones.
You've been around a while now, because it's kind of tailored more to what works for staff markets, so I think you could, you know.
And, and Mayor, I should throw
Yes, sir.
Out that, it, there's, you know, there's more than one, one way to approach this. They're all sort of forms of a conditional zoning, and it's the mechanism. One is the overlay concept with a PDD, or you can give it any name you want, but it's an overlay, and the whole zoning district carries these restrictions. So, to anybody who comes into that, uh, PDD district is bound by them. Uh, the, there's also the idea of, uh, you know, these, uh, a process where the council can establish conditions for their approval, a conditional approval, uh, but it has to be set forth in a process in the code. So, you know, I think we can, you know, with planning, we could certainly explore different approaches. Different cities do it differently. Some don't have PDD's, but they have a conditional zoning process. Uh, some, I'm sure, have their advantages and some have their disadvantages.
I, I'm not sure that I want us to go all the way down to the paint color, but certainly the, the heights of buildings and, and how they're situated on the process. But again, this heavy commercial tonight's a really good, um, example. I'm great with the project as proposed. I'm still a little uneasy about the heavy commercial, even though it's a small, small piece of property. So, this was a good night for this discussion. So, everybody's ready to look at what staff will bring to us to, okay. All right, and whenever, and when will this come back? Sixty days, maybe?
Ms. Hernandez, what do you think is a realistic timeframe?
When it comes back, can it come back as an initial authorization for a land development code change?
Yes, I think we would want to do initial authorization, um, just because we don't have anything in front of you. I thought maybe if we started with our old code and kind of talked through that, we might be able to get initial author, authorization today. But I think that I would like-
Oh, now I'm talking about when it comes back.
Yes, I think I would like to bring it back and, and make sure that we're on the right track before we get down the, down the road too far. Realistic timeframe is a little bit hard to, just having a hard time with it in my brain right now because I'm thinking about the comp plan and the survey that we have out, and we're also kind of trying to finalize some of the area plans to get those ready to come forward. So, I don't know if sixty days is going to be-
I just meant not less than sixty days, at least. If it's ninety-
We get longer than sixty days.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I thought you wanted it back in sixty days, and I was-
No, I was just starting at sixty days, but, but not, I, I knew it wouldn't be less than sixty days.
I think that we would like to have some time to work with Sam, research some other communities, and if they have any innovative ideas.
Take time to work on it.
Yes, I, if we could be given just a little bit of grace with the comp plan project, if we get that thing moving in March and April, like I think we will, then, you know, March, April, hopefully we can be back.
Memorial Day.
April, May, we could hopefully be back.
Ms. Hernandez, do you think we could provide an update in sixty days about where we are and what our anticipated timeline is? So that we can at least give counsel an update on it?
Sure, I, I'm, yeah, that's fine, I, I'm-
And that way, you know, if you're going to need a little bit more time or whatever, just so we're communicating and providing realistic timeframes.
And there may be a check-in, where you've got a bunch of options, and then we need to choose an option, and then there may be another sixty days of research to write it, write it up, so.
Just to give us a little bit of time and give you a little bit of time to thoughtfully kind of think about that with existing workload.
Sure, yeah, I will tentatively schedule that for the first meeting in April.
Thank you.
Putting it on my calendar right now.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
I love calendars.
That is wonderful, and we will close out item seven, we'll go to item eight, then we'll take a break, then we'll do our board and commission appointments.
Whole discussion regarding possible requirements for subdivision developers to provide space, funding, or other resources for the installation of emergency sirens and provide direction by motion to staff.
Okay, uh, we have emergency sirens now. I think they're up and functional. We have a number, a few of them, uh, for, in the grand scheme of things for our city. And I'm thinking, okay, we've got big developments way out there. And speaking of new development paying their own way, when you have something as big as- when you have something as big as, uh, name five, big subdivisions, uh, I'm thinking, A, we ought to have a siren there. And B, uh, I would like for them to pay for that siren to our specifications for the, um, safety of their residents would be a good thing. So, that's my thought. Uh, again, this will be a land, land development code, I believe, requirement. So, is this something y'all are interested in?
Very much so, and I'd also like to add in GMSR systems, which are easy for people to get.
A what?
GMSR. It's basically radios, which are very expensive, that you can communicate with anybody in your neighborhood or even the town. And, uh, like during the year, whenever communications were down, you're able to get messages back and forth.
Mr. Stopkin, come on.
Similar to a ham radio? Yeah, yeah. But GMRS, they don't actually have a license. It's a small, it's a small license. It's not like a my ham radio licenses.
But, but, and it's different from a phone, how?
Because phones go out.
Well, but if that needs electricity. Of course, if the cell towers are down, then, yeah, we're all in trouble, but...
Well, hopefully they've been in charge or... Yeah, they have, GMRS usually has backup systems, batteries, if it goes out.
Okay.
They'll hold it for a while. It's just a line of communication that works very effectively.
Okay. We can get information on those, but... Yeah, please.
Uh, Chase Stapp, Assistant City Manager. Uh, what Councilman Scott is referring to is a GMRS radio system. It's a radio system that, uh, you do, you, you do have to apply for and receive a license from the FCC, but it's intended for familial communication. So, one family member to another, for example, maybe you own a ranch, uh, and there's no cell service on your ranch. You can use these little handheld walkie-talkies to talk to each other. Yeah, but communities, um, well, not necessarily communities as in government entities, but, uh, entities, people, private entities can install repeaters on towers to make them more effective.
Okay.
We do have GMRS radio users in our community, quite a few. I don't have the exact number. And there is interest in the community, particularly by Ms. Coppola, she's, she and I have talked about this extensively, for at least one repeater. Uh, I di, I just wanted to mention though, these towers with the sirens on them don't meet the, the height requirements for an effective GMRS repeater. So, we would need to look at other options to expand that program if we, if we ever wanted to.
I'm still, I'm still thinking making them pay for it, that's kind of...
Yeah, well, um, you know, for example, the, the research I've done so far indicates that the water tower out at La Sima is about the only city-owned, uh, structure that's high enough for an effective GMRS repeater.
Because you've got to have line of sight?
It's, yes, it's got to be high enough for it to be effective. Yeah, so, we could talk more about that later, but I do want to talk about the fact that tho, those particular siren poles aren't, aren't really high enough for them.
Okay, well, I didn't even have that one on my radar, if you will. Um, and I, and I was looking at the sirens, and we would have to look at the spacing. If you're putting in a new, you know, five acre and there's already a siren there, then no. But if you're putting in, you know, a five hundred acre, you might need two. So, and I leave that up to staff as to decide, you know, how many we need and where and all that other good stuff. Um, but I'm just thinking, I would not, it, for the benefit of these new subdivisions, I think they should pay for it and not the citizens of San Marcos have to pay for those. We're already paying for ours, the ones that are in existence.
For members of the public or maybe even developers that may be listening to this conversation, they're not, um, they don't require a lot of infrastructure. They don't require, for example, a huge pad, a huge structured tower. It's a pole with a siren, uh, speaker on top, um, and that needs power.
Right.
So, they're not terribly complex.
Uh, council, what do you think we need for, for this to go forward?
I like it. Um, what's the enforcement mechanism if they say like, you know, I don't want to do it?
I don't know.
Uh, but yeah, I like it. I like the idea of, you know, any way we can add repeaters or having redundant forms of communication within our community, uh, with radios and stuff. Any, any way we can, you know, prep our community for just a variety of scenarios where communication or power may go down. I think that's really important. But yeah, I think this is a great idea. Let's start putting, um, asking, uh, developments to add in these, uh, emergency towers.
Y'all good with the sirens?
Yeah.
Sirens, okay.
Oh, look, safety.
And I assume this is the same as you have to do a street, you have to do, uh, retention pond. This would be the same as any other requirement that we have in the land development code?
Yep.
My understanding, but we'll...
Yes, yeah, but we would have to demonstrate the, you know, again, it's related to the impact of the development as to what public amenities we can ask them to dedicate. So, we'd be looking at some public safety aspect and their, so if the idea is they're, uh, having an impact because that many more residents are in danger of, you know, say, a storm or emergency, uh, then that puts a burden on the, our public safety system. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure we can make that connection. I, I'm just not familiar with what other cities do, but I'm sure we can try and make that connection. I'll have to explore that a little further, but we'll certainly work with planning and see where we can go on that.
I wish I'd thought of this six years ago, yes.
Is there a way that, um, that we could utilize our fire stations with, you know, in connection, let's say we have more fire stations that are going out there in these neighborhoods? Can we have them maybe build on the fire stations, these towers, to allow our...
I don't know what the spacing would be. Again, I leave that up to staff to figure out what it would be. But if, if where we're putting a fire station is a good location for one, then that's our land and we can do whatever, but I would still ask them to pay for it.
Oh, absolutely, that, that's what I want to do.
But you won't get the line of sight in those fire stations, maybe the new ones?
No, 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 I'm talking about just the sirens. I'm not talking about this other thing.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Uh, where, where putting fire stations out there, might those be good sites for the sirens and maybe this other tower? And I just said, it depends on if it's in the location or nearby of what we need.
They, they could be, and that could be something we could work out. Um, when, when there, I think there were fourteen of those emergency sirens, give or take one or two, around the city. And when we, when we funded those and installed those, we weren't building fire stations at the time. And so, they, they all went in as a group, right? Growth could, I mean, it could be a fire station location, maybe, maybe not, you know?
Well, if there is a fire station close to where we need to go, it seems to make sense that's where we would go. We just have to see.
Yeah.
Has there been a study if to have more than one alarm? Uh, ones for weather and the others for whatever?
The new system, we're, we're, we're in the process of upgrading the sirens now. The new software system is capable of multiple types of alarms. Obviously, that's going to require a significant amount of public education so our, our, our public knows what alarm A versus B versus C means. But we will gear up and do that when we're ready.
Well, the other thing we've talked about is if the siren goes off, then the pre-education is going to be, go to the city site, assuming that if we're running the sirens, we have something on the homepage. Go, go, go to the website for details. For those that don't have a web, then, I don't know, one, if it's a flood, two, if it's a tornado, I don't know, but we just have to figure it out.
There, essentially, to hear one of those goes, goes, going off is supposed to signal you if you're outdoors. It's not intended for people indoors to hear, although you can sometimes.
Yeah.
It's for people who are outdoors to go inside and immediately look for the weather advice.
Do you have a question here? And in cases where we do have the siren go off, uh, and of course, the education for individuals to go on our website to see what those sirens mean. But is there any way that, and this is just thinking technology-wise, for us to have something with our cable providers in the area to have a little stroller? Or a little scroll that comes up?
National Weather Service activates that.
But, but the other thing we're going to do is if we're running sirens, we're probably sending phone calls out through Warren Central Texas.
Well, by the time the sirens go off, generally, National Weather Service is already activating the iPOS system and your phone's ringing and, yeah.
Which includes landlines? Well, no, not the iPOS, but if we're sending out Warren Central Texas, that's going to landlines too. Did you have another question?
No, that was it, thank you, Mayor.
Y'all got anything? Okay, so, we will close this one out. We will take a break. We will come back at 7:50 and do our boards and commissions. Thank you. Return from our, um, break, it is 7:53. Ms. Trevino, we will move along to item nine.
Discuss and consider annual appointments to various boards and commissions to it. A, animal shelter advisory committee. B, arts commission. C, cemetery commission. D, citizen utility advisory board. E, convention and visitors borough board. F, economic developments and markets board. G, ethics review commission. H, historic preservation commission. I, housing authority. J, human services advisory board. K, library board. L, main street advisory board. M, neighborhood commission. N, parking advisory board. O, parks and recreation board. P, plan and zoning commission. Q, senior citizen advisory board. R, veteran affairs advisory board. S, zoning board of adjustment.
Okay, I've got a couple of things to say before we get started. And one of them is to thank everyone who has completed a volunteer application. Each year, the applicants are more diverse than before. Ethnicity, age, their length of time in San Marcos, geographic, uh, area where they reside, personal experience, et cetera. Some noted tough times growing up, and that's valuable background because many in our community are low-income. I thank the city clerk staff, communication staff for doing a good job on getting the word out. And thanks to everyone who shared the link with friends, family, and in newsletters. Interesting to see the popularity of boards and commissions and how it changes from year to year. Arts is still popular, and cemetery commission. It's wonderful to have more applicants than we have slots open. Uh, that's not always the case. Uh, same for housing authority, lots of interest. This year, not so much for library or Main Street as we have in the past. So, it's kind of interesting how that cycles through. To all who applied, we always have more applications and slots open, so don't be discouraged. We often reappoint members who are eligible, leaving fewer slots open. And many boards and commissions have slots that require either a certain type of employment, employment in a specific area. So, while you may have interest, you may not qualify for the slots that are open this year. Uh, your application stays on file for, Ms. Trevino, it's a year, correct? And vacancies do happen throughout the year. So, not being selected isn't always a no, it's often a not yet. And with the online application, we have more information about applicants now. You get to tell us about yourself and your interests and why you applied, which gives us information to make decisions. It's like a cover letter for a job, which is what I did for my first commission. I wrote to the, uh, council and it was like a cover letter for a job. Makes it much easier to see who should go where on which board or commission. Like, for example, if you apply for the parks board and you know how much time you spend in our parks and you and your kids go and you use the green spaces, that's a plus. But we're glad to see application interest from anyone, people saying, "I would like to serve my community." And that's always a good thing to see. So, thank you for volunteering to make San Marcos a better place for all of us. So, council, everybody's got your big, big print version, I believe. And as we have done the last few years, shall we start with Planning and Zoning Commission? And I don't know what page it's on because I, I, I redo mine, so my pages aren't going to be the same as yours. So, what we will do is we will look for nominations. And nominations, there does not have to be a second. One person can make that nomination. And once we know whose names are in play, we'll go over those again. And when Ms. Trevino asks you, uh, which folks, uh, for whom you're voting, if you would please give them in the order in which they appear, uh, on the page. Um, I guess give first and last name, or we can do all first names, all last names, just something to make it as easy as possible for Ms. Trevino to mark and know who it is that you're voting for. So, uh, we start with Planning and Zoning Commission. And we have three people who are eligible to be reappointed. And then a number of people, um, who also have applied. A couple did not qualify because they've been here less than five years, so...
Sorry, I rearranged mine too, so, but I, you said read them in order, so...
The order in which they appear on the list, if you could.
Mayor, which...
I mean, it may be one person, one, five, and eight, but just in the same order would be good.
Several names and then a break. Uh, is it the people in the first category, are those the people that you need?
On the left side, the first three are those whose terms are up, and the rest of them after the blank are people whose terms are not up, just in case you're curious as to who else is on that commission. Stop me anytime if I'm saying something that isn't true. Okay, yeah.
And Mayor, do you prefer us to go, just, can we go the three we refer? Or do you want us to go one by one?
You, you, let, let's just get all the names out and then we'll figure out how we'll deal with them. Because often it's, we have two nominations for two slots, and then we just, you can vote I, and it's easier. But if we have, you know, eight people for two slots, we just keep going around with our rounds of voting until we get to the end.
I'll go ahead, if I can go by nominations, um, I'll throw them out there. Um, I would actually like, um, to nominate Lupe Costilla, William Agnew, and Jim Garber.
Which would be to reappoint the incumbents, okay?
I'd like to nominate Lucy Johnson.
All right. Any others? Okay.
Alana Rosenwasser.
Okay.
And my second was going to be Lucy Johnson.
Okay, and I'm not trying to talk you out of Alana Rosenwasser. However, one of the things that I do is I look at the, um, um, boards and commissions that don't have very many applicants. And for Alana, she's one of the few, uh, that applied for the parking board. And so, um, as long as you know that and you're still good with her P and Z, then we're, we'll roll. I just want to draw that to your attention.
Um, yeah, I'm going to stick with Alana just because she applied for this in the past, and, um, it's her first choice.
Okay. So, we have five names in play. You will each need to vote for three. And if you would give those slowly, uh, so that Ms. Trevino can, can mark those. So, Ms. Trevino, I'll turn this over to you now to go around the table.
All right, I want to start with Mr. Prather.
Uh, Lucy Johnson, Lupe Costilla, and Jim Garber.
Okay, I'm going to ask again if y'all will give us the names in the order that they appear on the list will be helpful and faster for us.
All right, Mr. Scott.
It's hard.
Ms. Costilla, Mr. Garber. I can't pronounce her last name, Rosenwa...
Rosenwasser?
Yeah, and Lucy Johnson.
Uh, you just named four and you only get three.
Why?
Because there's only three slots available.
I want them all.
Nice try.
Are you good, Mr. Scott, with those three options?
No, he named four.
Yes, but, yes, which one does he want to remove?
I'm, I'm waiting on you to, to start over and give me your three, please.
All right, um, Lupe Costilla, Rosenwasser, and Lucy Johnson.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Garza.
I'll do, uh, Lupe Costilla, Alana, and Lucy.
Thank you. Right, Mayor Houston?
Lupe, William, and Jim.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Lupe, William, and Jim.
Thank you. And Mr. Gleason?
Uh, Lupe, William, and Jim.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Mendoza?
Uh, Costilla, Agnew, and Garber.
Sorry, I'm telling him I'll be there.
So, I wasn't keeping track. I have no idea. Dang, what a bummer.
So, I, yeah, I have Ms. Costilla, and then I have Mr. Agnew and Mr. Garber.
Mm-hmm. Seven, four, and five, and the others were two and three. Okay, is there any, is there another one that y'all want to do, uh, next? Or shall we just start at the top and go through alphabetically?
Go back to the beginning.
Yeah, great. We'll start with A, which is the animal shelter advisory. Uh, several of these are set, uh, due to the nature of their job. Um, and so, that's going to be, uh, our animal shelter person, Christie. And so, I will put her name in. And, uh, Bri, is it Brianna Gettis? Uh, is, uh, in the Kyle Officer slot? And then... And then, and then we have one more left, I believe is correct. Ms. Trevino, at any time, if I say something incorrect, jump in there, please.
Citizen at large.
This is a lot of people and a lot of numbers. So nominations for the other slot. And I will draw to your attention Dylan Hoover has also indicated interest in the Senior Citizen Board. We have two slots, and we only have two applicants. Dylan Hoover, there's only two people for two slots. And so I put him there and dropped him off the animal shelter list. But we can still put him on there. That was just my reasoning for not. And both of the other people have rescue dogs or have fostered animals. They seem to be really interested in the animal shelter. Is there a nomination? I will nominate, and I'm probably going to mispronounce this name, is Firdos Vora. Any other nominations? Going once? Twice? The third one on the list? Got four rescue dogs. Y'all ready? Okay, this is three for three, am I right, Ms. Trevino? So we can just say aye? All right.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
And Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
All righty. So next is the Arts Commission. We need two. I would like to put in play the name of Rick Garcia, who is already on the commission. He's a non-resident, but we're good with that. And I will leave it open for others.
I'd like to nominate Jason Weems, please.
Got him in play. And we need, we will need two. So, but go ahead and nominate, and we can vote.
What did you say?
He said Jason Williams is on the list.
I have people. Can you do bookmarks on there? Of course I do.
She did bookmark the...
It's like kind of complicated. It's like a weird app, sorry.
Okay. The first year I did this, I didn't realize y'all had bookmarked all of the applications. I was just scrolling back and forth. Yeah, my bad. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, you can only, can only be non-resident or resident.
Do we know how many? We cannot have more than two non-residents, but right now, we have, one, two, three, four. We have five residents, so both could be non-residents, and I'm nominating a non-resident.
Oh, you're doing Rick Garcia?
Yes. He has excellent background in the arts.
Yeah, I know that. And he's the one who's current.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, and then I'm finding it quick.
Any other nominations? Okay, that's two for two.
All right, Ms. Garza? Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, and now we're to the cemetery, and we need three. We have two who are on there now, and I think they're doing a great job. I really, I enjoyed reading the interest in the cemetery by some of these folks. But I would like to nominate Tim Bauer Kemper and Clay Sullivan, who both, each goes by their middle name.
You said Tim and who?
Larry and Joseph, if you will, the first two on the list. Re-upping the incumbents. We need three, so there would be one more. I was really impressed by what Keith, I don't know if it's, who been, I've been, what he wrote as far as his interest.
That's between the two, him and Mrs. Ruiz.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's, uh...
I'll nominate Valencia Ruiz.
Okay.
It's such a simple application, but it seems so genuine and like a different perspective.
Yes, she's impressive, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Valencia Ruiz. She spends his time at the cemetery, cleaning it, and just reflecting.
We appreciate people.
Ruiz, it's like the fourth one.
Valencia.
Yes.
That works.
That will give us three for three. No other nominations? Three for three.
Mayor Houston?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, now we're at QAB. That's the Citizens Utility Advisory Board. We need, we need two folks who are not one of us, and we need a council member to be on this. Mr. Scott's term limited off. And so do we have a volunteer for this one?
I would actually love to volunteer for this. If, I'd appreciate the support of my colleagues, yes, thank you.
Okay, so...
I was going to voluntold you, so I'm glad that you...
I was going to say, he volunteered before we could voluntold him, so. Okay. So we have Matthew's name in, Matthew Mendoza's name in for the council member, but we still need two other folks.
I will nominate Elizabeth Damaya and Cody Brooks.
All right. This is why I didn't mention Cody Brooks for the last one, because we need him here. Okay, so we have, we need three, and...
We have three.
And we have three. Ms. Trevino, the three included the council member, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have three for three. So any others, last call? Three for three.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
And Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, my colleagues.
And you said we're not doing Construction Board this evening?
Right.
All righty. Then in that case, I think we are to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, AKA CBB. And we have two volunteers for the slot of hotel with more than 90 rooms. I'm sorry, we have three? Is that correct? Ms. Trevino, there's three people?
Carla and Janetta.
But that's one slot. We have three people who have applied for that hotel with more than 90 rooms? That's what it looks like.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
You have two?
And the premium outlet is...
Oh, I'm sorry, I put somebody down here twice. Never mind. We have two for one slot. And then for the outlets, we have one person. But there are others who could serve. If she's already termed out, should we seek out applications from, and contact the malls and see who they've?
Yes.
Okay, so we would not be reappointing her?
Right.
Okay, I'll take that name off. Okay, so that one will come back. Vacancy. And then we have Mr. Kevin Gilli for the Texas State slot. I'll put his name in for that one. And we have Adina Clausen, who is willing to serve for the tourist attraction. And then for the Greater San Marcos Partnership, the name we have there is the President Mike Camerlander.
It's not on your thing. I just got confirmation.
She's got confirmation today. It's a GS&amp;P slot. The question is, who there would do it? And Mike said he would. So I'll put those names in.
Mayor, which name did you put in for the hotel, 90 rooms?
I didn't.
Okay.
I'm waiting to see what name gets put in for the hotel with more than 90 rooms. One of the folks lives here, the other one lives in Buta, if that makes a difference. Carla Sanchez lives in Blanco Vista, and Janetta Frazier indicated she lives in Buta.
I would actually like to nominate Carla Sanchez, please.
Okay. Okay, are there any other nominations? If not, I believe there are no choices to be made here. We can just say aye or nay.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
I'm an aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, that brings us to Economic Development San Marcos. If Mr. Gleason is okay, it looks like his term is up. I would like to serve on that. Personally, I think the mayor should serve on that as per ordinance where we have other slots. But I will, we can put other names in. Mr. Gleason?
Mayor, that one, I was just put on this last year, and my term isn't up till 2027 on that one. It was Main Street that my term was up this time around.
No, you're listed at the top that you may have filled an, oh, you filled an unexpired term. Your term is up.
Okay, okay, all right. That's fine. Yeah, that's fine, if you want to serve mayor, that's fine.
I think it's, I think it's important that the mayor be on that one. Because if we reappointed, it would end in 2027. That's what those mean. The new term would end then. But he did go on last year or year before to fill an unexpired term. So he's correct, he hasn't been there very long.
Mayor, just for confirmation, if an individual were to serve on this board, are they also able to serve on the Construction Board as well?
I think that's the only one we have that you can serve on, too.
Construction Board of Appeals, yes.
I would like to nominate Chris Oliveria.
And he is in the small business category, and is the only one who's applied who fits that category. I'll go ahead and put in, and play the name of, it's Justin, not Justine Payne from the Chamber. He's serving as the chairman of the board this year. And we have a Terrence Sanders, who I believe has been given to us as the San Marcos Consulate School District Representative. So I will all put their name in. And I believe we have a vacancy for the medium business representative. So there's going to be a few vacancies left that we're going to need to do another round of reach out. And we can be specific on these. Any others? If not, there's really no decisions on here. We can just say aye, correct?
Yes.
All righty.
Okay, Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We're on to Ethics Review. We need three. And we have, we have three people who have not termed out that if their name is on the right side, that means they have indicated a willingness to serve again and have an application on file.
I'll nominate Smithson, Chandler, and Rowe.
Okay, other nominations?
Mr. Prather, I'm so sorry, can you repeat those, the names?
Smith, Smithson, Chandler, and Rowe.
And if you could give them to us in the order that they're on, it makes it faster, thank you.
Got it, thank you.
Other nominations?
Yes, Arthur Taylor.
All right.
And, hold on, let me do them now here. Now I'm just like, who do we put in other things?
I think he's, this was the only one he showed interest that he asked for.
And I think he was on this before.
I think he's chaired it before.
Yeah, so Arthur Taylor, and then, give me one second, I'm trying to do like...
Go right ahead.
James Summers. And, yeah, that's all I got.
Okay. And this is another one of those. If you look at James Summers, he had indicated an interest in the Veterans Advisory Board. And we need two, and there's only three who have applied. And I believe one of those is the only applicant for the Neighborhood Commission who fits in slot five, District Five, which means we would have two left, and Mr. Summers is one of them. Bringing that to your attention, if you still want to nominate him for Ethics, we'll go ahead and do that.
So then what's his first, if he has three?
I think this is his second choice.
Right.
I'm not sure. I scribbled on mine and edited some stuff, so I couldn't tell you.
So it says James Summers, second. Under Ethics Review. And then, and then it says Human Services, second, and Veterans, third.
Yes, but if we put him here, we are going to be short for Veterans.
Yeah, but the thing is, I know him personally, and I think Veterans is third for a reason, so.
That's fine, we'll leave his name in play.
I want to nominate Forrest Folkerson.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, so we have six people nominated, and we have three slots. So when Ms. Trevino calls your name, you will need to give her three names. Maybe just give her the first name, but in the order that they're shown, just whichever are your three, just in the order that they're shown here will be extremely helpful. And Ms. Trevino, it's your show now.
Okay, Mr. Prather?
Arthur Taylor, Riley Chandler, and Jeffrey Smithson.
And, I'm sorry, I got Arthur Taylor.
Riley Chandler and Jeffrey Smithson.
It's Riley, Jeffrey, and Arthur in the order in which we have them here.
Okay. All right, Mr. Scott?
Jeffrey Smithson, Arthur Taylor, and Forrest Folkerson.
What was that? Would you say those again, please?
Jeffrey, Arthur.
You want me to say it again?
Yes, please.
In Spanish, or just...
No, English is fine.
Jeffrey Smithson, Arthur Taylor, Forrest Folkerson.
Okay. I knew I'd written something down wrong. Okay.
Ms. Garza?
Riley, Arthur, and then James.
Thank you. All right, Mayor Houston?
Thomas Rowe. Jeffrey's, no, hold on. Jeffrey Smithson. Arthur Taylor.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez?
It'd be Thomas Rowe, Jeffrey, and Arthur Taylor.
All right, Mr. Gleason?
Thomas Rowe, Jeffrey Smithson, and Forrest Folkerson.
Mr. Mendoza?
Thomas Rowe, Jeffrey Smithson, and Arthur Taylor.
Sorry, my eyes go kind of crazy. Sorry, my eyes go kind of crazy with this line here. It's okay.
So much tabulating.
I have Thomas, Jeffrey, and Arthur to be appointed.
Yes. On to Historic Preservation Commission.
Mayor Houston, did you want me to go around and get a vote?
Do what?
Oh, I already did that. I'm so sorry. Yes. I already got it. We're good.
Okay. We're keeping each other honest tonight, so. It could have been.
Could have been.
Okay, Historic Preservation, we need three. We have, you see the slots from the people that, that were on? And we've also got some others. And we have to have, we're supposed to have three members from historic districts. And unfortunately, we, let's see, do we have one? Oh, no, we do have some still on. Okay, we're good. We're good. So I would like to nominate the three who are on now. Peter Dedek, History of City, but I believe he knows lots about historic things. Diana Baker, property owner, and Jennifer Rogers, property owner in the historic district. Are there other nominations?
I will second those.
Any other nominations? Okay, three for three.
Okay, Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza? Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, and now we are to the Human Services Advisory Board. We have one incumbent who wishes to continue. Do what? I'm sorry, I meant to say Housing, and we have, we have two that wish to continue. Yes, I knew that. I just, my eyes dropped for some reason. And a whole bunch of people who have applied. I do want to draw your attention, Jay Whiteside has also applied for Neighborhood Commission and is the only one that fills the apartment slot.
Who, I'm sorry?
This J.A.I.C. Whiteside, that's the third one down. And Neighborhood was their first choice, so.
We need somebody on the Housing, wait, we're doing the Housing Authority one yet?
Yes, we are.
Okay, okay, gotcha, 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 okay.
You said that he was the only one that had an apartment?
The only one to apply for the apartment dweller slot on the Neighborhood Commission. And Neighborhood Commission was his first choice. This is his third choice. So I just, I wasn't going to put his name in play. I will put the names in play of the two people who are on there now who wish to continue, which is Adriana Castillo and Samantha Holes.
May I nominate some folks, or?
Certainly.
What are you gonna do?
No, go ahead.
I want to nominate Tamara Thompson, and I know there's, these are a lot of apps, but if you, if you didn't get a chance to read that, I would skim through it now. Super compelling, very real, lived experience story.
I was very impressed.
Passionate, Victoria Raymond, and then Laura Sears. Unless, did we put her somewhere else? No.
No, we didn't on the other one.
And I think that's the person who had the social work background, right?
Social work, mom, been here three years.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so those.
And fosters animals, but that was the animal shelter side.
Yeah, I mean, you know me, I'm a sucker for the animat化. Yeah, so Tamara, Victoria, and Laura.
Okay.
Laura Sears.
Are there any other nominations? We've got five for three slots, so again, when Ms. Trevino calls your name, just tell her your preference, preferably in the order that they appear on the list.
Mr. Scott?
Go ahead and pass. I just can't.
Ms. Garza?
Tamara, Victoria, and Laura.
Mayor Houston?
Adriana, Samantha, and is it Tamara, Tamara? That person.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Adriana, Samantha, and Victoria.
Mr. Gleason?
I've got Adriana, Samantha, and Tamara.
Thank you. Mr. Mendoza?
Adriana Castillo, Samantha Holes, and Laura Sears, Laura Sears.
Thank you. Mr. Prather?
Adriana, Samantha, Tamara.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Adriana, Samantha, and Victoria.
Victoria, okay. I have Adriana, Samantha, and Tamara.
Now we're to Human Services. We have one person wishing to reapply, and some other folks?
I'd like to nominate James Summers.
Didn't we just put him on something? Or did he not make it?
Oh, let me look.
Hold on.
He was on the, oh, no, he did not get appointed.
Okay, so you're nominating Mr. James Summers?
Yeah.
All right. Did you have another one, Mr. Prather?
The, Yancy.
Okay. The incumbent.
I'd like to nominate Linda Harper Williams, please.
Again, I'm just so impressed with these applications, and the depth of interest has been, it's wonderful. Okay, are there any others? We have three for two slots, so when Ms. Trevino calls your name, if you would give her two names.
Ms. Garza?
Yancy and James.
Mayor Houston?
Yancy and Linda.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yancy and Linda.
Thank you. Mr. Gleason?
Yancy and Linda.
Thank you. Mr. Mendoza?
Yancy and Linda.
Mr. Prather?
Yancy and Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Scott?
Yancy and Linda.
So it's going to be Ms. Yancy and Linda Harper Williams.
All right, and moving on to Library. We used to get lots of applicants for the library, not as many this year. We have two who wish to continue on. So I will put the names of Catherine Cargill and Shirley Ogletree in play. But some of these others look really good, too. Anyone else, other names willing to take them?
That's fine with me.
We're good. Ms. Trevino, we're two for two on this one.
Okay, Mayor Houston?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yeah.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And Ms. Garza?
Aye.
All right, Main Street, we do need a council member. Mr. Gleason has been serving well on that. I would like to put his name in play. Also, he's on the Parking Advisory Board, and downtown Turs, Main Street, I think it's good to have that interconnection there. So I heartily suggest Mr. Gleason. You're good with that, right, Mr. Gleason? For Main Street, to be the council member?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
If I may, please, I'd like to nominate Adam Von Art, and then we have Suell Esani.
So you're nominating both of them?
Yes, please.
Okay, and Ms. Trevino, do we need two, or the council member plus two?
No, that is going to be total three.
Okay. So it's council member, and then we can have two more?
Yes.
Thank you. That's the way I was reading it, but, okay, all right. So we have Mr. Gleason, S.U.H.E.L., and Adam Von Art have been nominated. And we need two plus council member.
Okay, I'd like to nominate William DiSoto.
Okay, and that's wonderful, but I'm going to draw to your attention ZBOA. And you know, we don't always have a lot of people interested in the ZBOA. And he's, he's been on a number of these, but he is really good. So that's why I did not suggest him for Main Street.
Okay, let's go with Adam.
He's already been nominated.
Oh, okay, well.
Good move.
I'll let y'all go on.
Well, right now, it's council member plus two, and we have a council member plus two, but we can certainly take more names. Okay, Ms. Trevino, this can be an aye or nay.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
And Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, and now we are at the Neighborhood Commission, and every one of these is a specific slot. It's for a sector, or we've got the Student Affairs from the university, a student government rep, or the someone who lives in an apartment complex. And we have pretty much one for one on these, if I'm correct. Ms. Trevino, stop me if I'm incorrect. For Sector Seven, we have a Heidi Holliday. For Sector Four, Bobby Garza Hernandez is willing to re-up. We have a Robert Norris, who is in Sector Six. Alana Trammell, who is in Sector Five. Jonathan Martinez is in Sector Six, but he's one of the university reps. And the Jay Whiteside that I mentioned earlier, who's willing to serve in the apartment slot. And we were not specific about apartments, doesn't have to be any particular district. So if y'all are good with those, we can say yea or nay.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
I think I heard a second aye from the Gleason household.
Probably did.
Yeah. All right, Parking Advisory Board, we need three. Currently, Lauren Mickaton, she filled an unexpired term and is willing to re-up. And so is John David Carson, who was the Main Street recommended member. And then we have two other people who are willing to serve. And so I will put the names of Lauren and John David in. And then we have four vying for three slots.
I'd like to nominate Ida Miller, please.
All right.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I know, some of these are really tough. It's really tough because we had really good applications this year. Okay, well, all four names that could be put in play are in place, so I don't need to ask if there's anyone else. This time, there are four folks. If you would, if you would vote for three, please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Wait, I'm sorry, I thought we were only filling three spots instead of?
It's three. You'll need to give three names.
Mick, Lauren, John, and Ida, please.
I'm sorry, you said Lauren, John, and Ida?
And Ida, yes.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Prather?
John, Lauren, and Ida Miller, John Carson.
Yep, thank you, yes. So Lauren, John, and Ida. Mr. Scott?
Lauren, John, and Ida.
Thank you. Ms. Garza?
Lauren, John, and Alana.
Mayor Houston?
Lauren, John, and Alana.
Lauren, John, and, okay, thank you. And Mr. Gonzalez?
Lauren, John, and Ida.
Thank you. And Mr. Gleason?
Lauren, John, and Ida.
Okay, it will be John, Lauren, and Ida.
All right, rolling on to Parks and Recreation. Now, this list looks like it usually does. A lot of people would like to be on our Parks Board.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Derek Hammer, did he just like withdraw his application?
I couldn't.
Derek Hammer, he was in like the PDF, but I don't see.
Oh, he is not a resident. You have to be a resident to be on. Yeah. Yeah, that's what happened to him. We thank him for his interest, but, but you have to be a resident.
I'd like to nominate Lucy Johnson.
Hold on, let me get that written down. Parks, Parks, Parks.
I'd actually like to nominate Amanda Hargrave.
All right.
Laura Sears.
Sears, so I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mendoza.
Who were those nominations? I couldn't hear them.
Oh, Amanda Hargrave?
Your microphone.
Oh, wait, yeah, a lot of sisters started on the Sears, and then Dan Alden.
It's Alden. They missed an N here. You are correct.
I still couldn't hear those, Mayor.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I have my mic.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear. He had his mic off. I couldn't hear.
Mr. Gleason, I asked for Amanda Hargrave, Laura Sears, and Dan Alden.
Ms. Garza? I would like to nominate, I don't want to mispronounce their name, Jay Whiteside?
That's the apartment person from the Neighborhood Commission.
Oh, that's who we got. You guys each charts. It's okay, we have Laura and Lucy.
Mm-hmm.
And who else? Oh, and Amanda, right?
And Dan Alden has been nominated, and we have three slots.
Oh, they're so good.
Mr. Prather, did you have more than just one? Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with, I don't have anybody else. That's right, okay.
Any other names? We have three for four slots, so you will give three names to Ms. Trevino when she calls yours.
Mr. Prather?
Lucy Johnson, Laura Sears, and Amanda Hargrave.
Mr. Scott?
Amanda, Laura, and Lucy.
And Lucy, thank you. Ms. Garza?
Amanda, Laura, and Lucy.
And Lucy, okay. Mayor Houston?
Amanda, Laura, and Dan Alden.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Amanda, Laura. Was there Lucy here somewhere?
It says Lucy Johnson or Dan Alden.
Dan Arden.
Okay.
Pronounced last night.
Alden.
Thank you. Mr. Gleason? Mr. Gleason?
To Amanda, Laura, and Dan, Dan Alden.
Thank you. And Mr. Mendoza?
Oh, boy. I, I get the deciding vote on that last one. Hargrave, Sears. And it's a very difficult decision. Mrs. Johnson is, is amazing also, Lucy's done some amazing things, but I, I'm going to go ahead and go for Mr. Alden, please.
Okay. So it's going to be Amanda, Laura, and, um, Dan, Dan Alden.
All right, and rolling right along, we are to the, we're in the home stretch, folks, Senior Citizen Advisory Board. We have two vacancies, we have two applicants.
I don't have them in my list.
Is it after PNC?
Oh, it's, it's paginated.
Oh, whatever, we did, we already did PNC.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Mayor, since we only have two, I'll go ahead and nominate, uh...
All right.
Dylan Hoover and Nathan Garza.
All right. Well, that's the two for the two, so we'll just, we're going to go around the table with a yea or nay. Ms. Trevino?
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to, okay, Mr. Mendoza, last. Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mary Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, and we are to, uh, Veterans. And to remind you...
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself for being the county VSO and step out on this one.
And that would be the County Veterans Officer.
County, yeah, County Veteran Service Officer, Hayes County.
Uh, and I think, I think we put, uh, we put Alana on the Neighborhood Commission because we needed her to fill, um, that slot. So for Veterans, we have, uh, two open slots and two applications.
I'll go ahead and nominate, uh, James Summers and Temper Sajeez Gudith.
All right. And I believe that's all we can do on that one, so a yea or nay will do it for you.
Okay. Um, let's start with Mr. Scott.
Uh, yea.
Ms. Garza? Mary Houston?
Yep.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one abstained.
And last but not least, Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Mary Houston, let me call Mr. Prather back.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Come back. Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and now this is one that's a little different from the others, this is one of those legal things, and so what, usually when we have a vacancy, we'll move, uh, alternate one up into that slot and add the new people as, uh, alternates. And so, uh, I'm going to suggest that we, we have three vacancies, and I'm going to suggest we, uh, in the three mem- full member slots, we put Jessica James, Chana Temple, we move William A. Moore from alternate one, and we make Bill De Soto... Alternate one, because we didn't have a second alternate, and actually, we still need a second alternate, is that correct? So we still have a vacancy?
Yes.
Okay, so let me go through that again. Um, I, um, I nominate Jessica James, Chana Temple, move William A. Moore from alternate one to full member, and, uh, we bring in Bill De Soto as first alternate.
Off second half.
Okay. That, that'll, that'll work. Alternate, and that first alternate, that gives us still a vacancy. All right. So this is a yes or no, Ms. Trevino?
Okay. Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Mary Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
And Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
All right. So, we still, would you email us tomorrow with the vacancies that we still have? I'm afraid if I try to call them out tonight, I'll miss somebody. Let us know, and then you'll do your usual thing. You know, what we might want to do, and I could do a couple of them, is to look at some of the people who went to the trouble to apply, and some have shown general interest, is maybe calling them who've gone to the trouble to apply and say, would you be interested in one of these other commissions?
Okay.
What was some of the vacancy, or...
She's going to email us tomorrow, I don't remember. Yeah, we, yeah, we, they've already shown interest, so if, if one of these others might have been their fourth choice...
Should he get in anything? Any legitimacy?
And Lucy Johnson.
Let, let's, let's see where, yeah. If, if y'all want to contact folks like such as that, after she sends you the, the vacancies and see if they're interested in any of those.
Will do.
Uh, how do you want them to contact you? Is it an email to you saying, from that person?
Yes.
Saying this is, I would like to add this to my...
Resubmit and applica- well, I mean, we don't want them to go through that hassle, but...
No.
Once we, if they could just send us an email.
Send an email to you?
Mm-hmm.
To City Clerk at?
San Marcos, TX.
All right. Then let's, let's do that. Okay. And, would you read item ten, please?
Yes. The City Council will convene an executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code. A, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Consider Economic Development Incentives for Project Journey. B, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney to receive legal advice regarding the state of Texas versus the City of San Marcos filed in the District Court of Hayes County, Texas, pertaining to the city's enforcement of marijuana laws under Chapter 54, Article Four of the City Code.
And, um, to our viewing audience, as usual, we, uh, post the executive session on our three o'clock work session, and on, and if we finish there, we don't need to do it at the six o'clock meeting. If we don't finish, we do pick up after, uh, at the end of the six o'clock meeting. However, we finished at our three o'clock meeting, so we do not need to go into executive session, so we can go right on to item eleven.
Okay. Um, consider action by motion or provide direction to staff regarding the following executive session items held during the work session and or regular meeting pursuant to the following section of the Texas Government Code, just as read.
Okay, and item A, we provided direction to staff, and under item B, we held a discussion. So we are now to the question and answer session with the press and public. We will take questions for, uh, up to three minutes. If we have answers handy, we will respond after the three minutes, and if we do not, we will email, uh, the person asking the question and post it on the message board. And is Ms. Capoletta the only person who signed up? Okay, just want to check, see if there's anybody in chambers. Okay, uh, Ms. Capoletta, the floor is yours for the next three minutes.
Okay, hey, y'all, it's Lisa from What's Up San Marcos and the Quarantine Catholic. I, I sent some language to you guys from one of the communities that does sirens, it's like a best practices language for the sirens. I want to just give you guys a couple pieces of information and ask a question. In Richardson, I'm a member of the Richardson Ham Club, that's where I tested, and I, the guys are great, they've done, been great mentors to me. Those ham radio operators work the municipality every month to test those sirens, and I just want to emphasize, there's been no citizen engagement with those sirens. I was here when those sirens were implemented, and I have no idea what to do if they go off. And you guys know me, I read every PDF that goes up on that server. I have a concern that they impede situational awareness, something Mr. Prather should know about, the importance of situational awareness in it, whether it's a, a disaster or otherwise. And, and my concern is, if we lose power, including internet, the public does not know what to do with those sirens. So you guys need, and, and I, and the example I sent you out says that the business community donated those sirens to that one municipality. So I really think that we need to step it up if we're going to make these investments to let the public know what they need to do and why they're installed. And e- either you, they don't work, or they're piercing, and some of us have very sensitive hearing. So, uh, to answer Mr. Stapp's, uh, question, there's sixty-four people, uh, in the community who have GMRS licenses, it's only thirty-five dollars, it's very easy to apply, we could have hundreds of people, a legion of little radio dorks, and I use dork in a complimentary way with, if we got this up. The other thing I want to say is that, uh, Mr. Stapp and I, I believe we were given wrong information, I believe those sirens are high enough, because I've tested this in other municipalities where people have a GMRS antenna on top of their house, and you can talk across the city. So I, I think that the guy was going for the gold standard that was advising me and Mr. Stapp, and so I think that's a falsehood, that we could really make this happen. So, um, have you guys considered making the developers who want to do high rises around here invest in that and not just, I just, I just have, there's an equity issue. I don't feel it's fair for Miss Merge to have to pay for these when some guy who wants to, uh, make a high rise and he's not paying for it, that's not fair. So that would be my only question. Then I guess my second question is, can I meet with city staff for us to be serious about an emergency community? Because if you guys don't have, uh, internet, there is no way for citizens to know, but if you have a legion of good citizens with radios, they can communicate what those sirens are for.
Ms. Reyes? Question about, uh, making the developers who have high rises pay for sirens? It's something we can look into.
I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we all paid for the first ones, didn't we?
Emer- I, I don't know how the emergency management sirens were paid for, I don't know if there was grant funded or if it was city fund, I'm not, I'm not real sure on that at this particular time.
Okay, so, uh, the response is, we will...
We'll look at that if that's something council as a body is interested in.
Okay.
So we would need to, to know that, if council as a body is interested in looking into that, and then we can find out, um, what the process would be for that.
So if folks want to do that, they put it on the agenda for a discussion item?
I mean, I think you can provide direction. What, I'm, I'm going to look at Mr. Mr. Aguita because of the...
I'm, I'm trying not to have a full discussion by the council on something that's not on the agenda.
Exactly.
When I discuss this with the planning staff, we can certainly look into what would be involved in that, but right now, I don't know how that would work.
Right.
Because it's similar to the plating process dedications, and it depends if plating is required in a particular instance, but we can look into that.
She was just talking about having them pay for it. But, okay, but it's going to take some research. Okay, so we are at the end of our agenda, and since there's nothing else that we can discuss, I will accept a motion to adjourn. If you'll turn on your microphone?
Second.
It didn't come on, okay. Okay. Mr. Scott moves that we adjourn, and Mr. Prather seconds that motion.
Mary, Mary Houston?
I'm an aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?